Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to the City of Lowell zoning Board of Appeals Public Hearing for February 28th, 2022. Tonight's alternate voting member will be Mr. George Proko. If you have a phone, please disable it, turn it off, place it on violence, silence. If you have the need to speak amongst yourselves, please do so in the hallway not to interrupt the decorum of the meeting. Tonight's meeting is live in chambers. It also can be viewed on LTC, smartphone, tablet, and Zoom. All items and documents are posted on the city's website. We'll move right into continued business. The petition ZB A 2022-3 for variance at 505 Capital Partners at 3850 Swift Street. We are receipt of a communication for continuance to March 14th, 2022. That being said, may I have a motion?
Is the petitioner online? Mr. Lania, is he online?
Mr. Lania? No.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought his second email said he would just accept the continuance vote.
Okay. Well, with that, three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2022-3 for 3840 Swift Street to continue the public hearing in this matter to March 14th, 2022.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second by the Vice Chairman Peck. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin?
I accept and approve continuance to March 14th, 2022.
Vice Chair Peck?
Approve continuance.
Member Callahan?
Approve continuance to March 14th, 2022.
Member Brier?
Approval.
Member Proko?
Approve continuance, March 14th, 2022.
Moving forward under continued business, ZB A 2022-1, variances Monsan at 60 Foster Street, Section 5.1. Monsan has applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals seeking variance approval at 60 Foster Street. The applicant proposes to construct an addition to the existing single-family home to include an attached garage and second-story living space. The subject property is located in the traditional single-family TSF zoning district. The application requires variance approval per Section 5.1 for relief from the zone, from the front yard setback requirements for garage and any other relief required Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening and welcome back. How are you tonight?
Good, how are you?
Good, thanks. You just want to tell us a little bit about your proposal and we'll get back on track. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Gunter San and we're locating at 60 Foster Street. We're seeking a variance approval at 60 Foster Street.
And just tell us a little bit about your project and you're looking, you're looking to...
Okay. We are an existing single-family home. We request to get a variance for the attached garage and a second-story living space.
Yeah, certainly. If you just, if you just come to the, to the microphone, state your name and address for the record and you can just give us a little bit about the petition.
Yeah, my name's Ed Greaves and I'm the contractor on the job.
Welcome, sir.
Okay, I applied, excuse me, I'm hot of hearing too, and I applied for a permit, which I was approved for. It was a mistake by, honest mistake, but the garage was too close. It didn't have the correct setback. Okay, so there was a cease and assist put in the building. I met with the commissioner and he let me finish the building to make it weather tight because I had a large gable standing and the house, part of the house was just topped. So I didn't want any leakage. And so they came, what, two weeks ago for the same hearing and they were turned down because there was things that had to be added to the new plot plan such as the carport location and the setbacks for the shed, which really didn't have anything to do with the addition. But it was, well, regardless, we took care of that and the driveway was there for years before and so was the shed. And so I guess we're just looking for approval for the setback.
Okay, thank you.
And the, the road cut, you only allow 15 feet.
Right.
Right. And you can see on the plot plan that I think it's like 39 or something, 35, 37.
37, is it 37?
37.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay. We're going to open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. I'd like to open up to the board. Van?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the applicant. You know, I think the last, in the last meeting, you just were missing some, some documentations in terms of updated site plan, plot plan. It seems like everything's in order. You know, to me, Mr. Chairman, I think, I think the relief they're seeking is minimal and the garage would actually probably be a good addition, not just to the house, but to the neighborhood. I think, you know, the belief is not detrimental. DPD noted that in their comments as well, so I think, you know, I have no issues with this and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Sean?
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to the applicant for providing the updated plot plan that was missing. I know they had last month and it's more detailed now and has a lot more information. Couple of questions, though. I note, you noted on the new plot plan that there's a movable carport. What's the intentions with the carport now that the garage is going in? I presume you're going to get rid of that?
It's a movable carport and they can put that wherever they want as long as they stay to the correct setbacks. And I was told by Mr. Fuller, I have to stay a minimum of 10 feet away from the addition and the setbacks on the lot line is 10 feet. So he can actually put that anywhere he wants in the yard.
Okay.
It's not mounted to the ground.
But I guess my question is, what's the intention? If you have a garage now, what's the point of having the carport unless you're, I mean, how many cars are they planning on?
Many, they have a large family and they have people over there for, he has a double-sized lot, if you noticed.
Mm-hmm.
And they have parties. He has a little fire pit in the backyard, he does a barbecue, she has a garden, and that's where, he has his parents staying with him. That, how old are they, 90?
Yeah, 90.
Right, and that's where they go, in the backyard.
Okay. All right.
Is there any rule about?
No, I mean, the purpose of the carport usually is when you don't have a garage, you want something covering the car.
Right, right.
And now you have a garage.
Yeah.
So I guess the question, that was going to be my question is, you know, it seems redundant. It would seem redundant on its face as far as getting, having a garage and a carport, but from what you're saying is there's going to be additional vehicles in the, in the house, so, yeah, I mean, probably wouldn't have too much of an issue with it, I think. I'm just trying to, okay, I'm looking at the Google Maps thing. All right, it's right there, so. That's, okay, so there's a deck back there, right, right now? Or there was a deck at some point off of Winona Street?
Yes.
Okay, so that deck is going?
That, that's gone.
That's gone? And now you just, the addition with the carport and, and actually, I do see another car parked like right on the lawn, too, so I guess it would take out the other one.
The street has a driveway that has an 80-foot curb cut directly across the street.
Okay. And I just noted that on the, you don't really have on the site plan the paved dimension, the paving up to the garage, because it looks like there's a piece, there is, even though you're attaching the, you're going to be attaching the garage to the, to the building, there's like a little piece of grass, from what I'm looking at the Google Maps thing, if there's a little piece of grass there, I'm presuming that's going to be all paved or going up to the garage?
It is paved, yes.
It is, it's already paved? It's already paved?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
If you go by, you have, I'm not sure of the formula, but you have a certain percentage, it has to be green area, you have a certain percentage that could be a paved area, and then you have living space.
Yeah.
Because they have a double-sized lot, they far exceed the green space.
Okay. Is the carport being used for the, for vehicles? I mean, just, again, I'm going by the, what's called the Google, the Google Street thing and it looks like you got like a little patio set up back there, at least from the Google Streets.
That's all gone.
That's all gone? But so, so the intention is that the carport is eventually going to be used for vehicles as well, right? Is that what the intention is?
He's asking if eventually you're going to park your car in the carport.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. We do addition one car garage and we have more cars.
Yeah, yeah.
So now like you, sometimes a lot of snow, stuff like that, you know, it's still not enough.
Yep, okay.
For the car, so we use the two carport.
Okay. All right. I, I don't have any further, further questions. Again, the relief that's being requested is fairly minimal and to, the addition of the garage will, will be, you know, helpful for the neighborhood to get another car off the, off the streets, so I don't have anything further. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Sean. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
When I started the job, I got them the row dumpster, there was water to breathe in the yard, cleaned up the entire yard, threw the yard dumpster full, excuse me, trapped out of the yard. You know, so he has, he's trying to make a look much nicer.
Thank you. Mark, apologies.
I believe you satisfied the, the board with the additional information that was requested. Those revisions have been noted and given the building will maintain the same front yard setback as the existing structure, I believe the requested relief is minimal. It certainly is not detrimental to the, the character of the neighborhood, so I look very favorably upon this petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Judge?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just reminded to remind residents to speak into the mic so we can hear them correctly. I agree with my, I agree with my fellow board members. I, I think that the requirement has been met. I, I don't think that there's any showstoppers. I, I would be looking to move forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So I just want to, I agree, I agree with, with my colleagues in the board about the minimum on the relief and I, I do agree, you've done, you've done a great job over there as far as cleaning and getting, to get the property up. My only concern would be as I look at both Google Maps presented by my colleagues here, the picture of this carport is, is being used as a recreational area, so I just want it be stated on the record that the carport is, can be used to store cars for out of weather. Keep in mind, you can't put sides on them, you can't enclose them, they cannot become living spaces, they cannot become storage spaces, they must remain the same. And I'm only bringing that up as a matter of public record, not only for this petition, but for all other petitions and all of the citizens of the city, because we went through this a few years back. We had a rogue company from North Carolina come into our city with carports and start placing them everywhere throughout the city and enclosing them for residents. And they were disingenuous to their selling of their wares and they put a lot of our citizens in harm's way in violation of zoning and so forth, so it's precautionary. My, my response to that is precautionary. It's not, it's not intended to be a negative approach that you're going to do that. I'm just, we don't want to go backward in time. I think it was four or five years back. It became quite a problem. They, they become fire hazards, they become issues for public safety, they become issues for firefighters and paramedics, so we'll, we'll leave it at that because we get a lot of misuse and misinformation from outside the city. And unfortunately, we had a, we had this outside state vendor taking advantage of our citizens and not providing them with the right information, so I just want to keep that on, on the record to not go backward. I agree with my colleagues, I think this is a good fit for the neighborhood. I think what you're doing over there is you're enhancing the property and I'm appreciative to yourself and to DPD that we're able to get everything in, in line here as far as the appropriate documents so we can move forward with the vote. That being said, any other comments or concerns with the board? None being heard. May I have a motion, Mr. Clark?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2022-1 for 60 Foster Street for variance approval under Section 5.1 for minimum front yard setback to construct in addition to a single, existing single-family residential building to include an attached garage with a second-story living space.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Brier. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin?
Approve.
Vice Chair Peck?
Approve.
Member Callahan?
Approved.
Member Brier?
Approval.
Member Proko?
Approval.
So you've been approved. We wish you the best of luck with your project and thank you for upgrading your property and keeping it in line.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Thanks for working with DPD. I know they, they do a great job. Moving forward under new business, we have ZB A 2022-5 for variance, Tony Valente at 113 Llewellyn Street, Section 5.1. Mr. Tony Valente has applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals seeking variance approval at 113 Llewellyn Street. The applicant proposes to construct an attached garage for a single-family home. The property is located in suburban, single-family SSF zoning district and requires one variance for side yard setback under Section 5.1 and any other relief required under Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, sir. How are you?
Good evening, good, how are you?
Fine, thank you. Tell us a little bit about your project.
Well, we're looking to just put a one-car garage to expand the parking space that, that we need really, because we're, we have a family of five. My son's getting his license. We have a hydrant directly in front of our home and there's, I mean, I have right now one sign that, you know, I got from the city that I can have parking there, but it's very limited and I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, can you speak into the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So we have limited parking where we are right now and this is going to add another parking space without taking away from my driveway, because we have a shed there right now and we're going to go 28 feet back. It's going to basically be where our patio is, but we'd rather that and have parking off-street as much as we can. And pretty much, I mean, that's, that's what we're looking to do, to be able to do that.
Great, thank you very much. I appreciate the outline. That being said, I'd like to open up public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Like to open it up to the board. Sean, you ready?
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. And yeah, this is a situation, again, I don't, I don't see any real issue of this. It's, the proposal will fit in with the neighborhood. I'm, I'm looking at the, again, the Google, this, Google's wonderful now at the streets so you can see, you can like see the property and see what's going on. And you mentioned the, yeah, the fire hydrant right out in front of your house, so that's going to be restriction obviously for front, front yard parking, so, so it would certainly make sense to add a garage in this, in this instance. And you got a fairly decent-sized driveway I can see there, too, but yeah, if you want to get it, but, but for the winter times, obviously, yeah, this would be good to get it in and, you know, again, save on, save on a lot of, I'm sure, manual labor and like snowing or snowblowing or whatever, so. But I, I don't see any real issues with this and I wish you the best of luck, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Mark? I think this is very doable and I'll, I'll be voting in favor of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do feel the applicant's pain about trying to get more space, especially when most of us are out there shoveling snow. Yeah, I, I don't see any problem here, Mr. Chairman. I think it's fairly standard and I would be looking to approve.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I agree with the, my colleagues. It's very well-kept property, they do a nice job. It's a beautiful street, one of the, one of the neighborhoods in the city that's kind of, it's kind of your own little space over there and it's all well-maintained. That, that fire extinguisher, that fire hydrant been there the entire time?
Yeah.
No cutout, huh? No, no cutout on it for access, huh?
Strange. It's right in, it's right in the lawn.
It's literally right in the center of itself.
Yeah, I'm, I'm surprised. I thought a few years back that we went around this, maybe 11 years at this point, we went around and, we went around and we did cutouts.
Yeah, property.
Yeah, well, they either brought it forward or they cut.
Oh, really?
They cut that in to, for relief, but you're stuck with the red. Usually they, someone, people turn them into Snoopy and everything else, but I have no other questions or concerns. I, I think it's going to, anytime you can help our citizens take relief from the outside weather in and out of their home and that's always, that's always a plus. Any other comments, concerns by the board?
I don't think you had to put Van talk yet.
Oh, I apologize. Mr. Vice Chair?
No, just thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I agree.
I was overzealous in name crossing and I should, I apologize so hotly to the Vice Chairman.
No worries, sir. You know, I, I agree, I think the relief you're seeking is very minimal, sir. And I think you have a real hardship in terms of, like my colleagues said, the fire hydrant right in front of your property, so you kind of, you know, your, your parking is decreased just by the, the safety hazard issue for the, you know, fire trucks and all that emergency stuff. So, and your property is, looks beautiful, so, you know, I think the relief you're seeking is very minimal, I think seven feet in the back and four feet inside, so I think the addition actually be, it'll work out not just for you, but for that whole neighborhood, so I wish the very best of luck to folks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Any other comments or concerns from the board? None being heard. May I have a motion, Mr. Clark?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2022-5 for 113 Llewellyn Street for variance approval under Section 5.1 for minimum side yard setback to construct an attached garage to an existing, single-family residential building.
Thank you. May I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Proko. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin?
Approve.
Vice Chair Peck?
Approve.
Member Callahan?
Approved.
Member Brier?
Approval.
Member Proko?
Approval.
She unanimously approved. Wish you the best of luck and good luck next winter without having to come outside too much.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Good luck with the build, sir. Take care. Moving forward under new business, ZB A 2022-6 for variance Zahid Abu Mahaid at 697-699 Beacon Street, Section 5.1, an application to the Zoning Board of Appeals for variance approval to construct an addition at 697-699 Beacon Street. The property is in the suburban, multifamily SSF zoning district and requires variance approval under Section 5.1 for the relief from the minimum side yard setback requirement and for any other relief required Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, sir.
Good evening to you, too.
Apologies if I misinterpreted your name or misspoke your name.
I apologize. It's no big deal. It happens all the time. My name is Zahid Abu Mahaid. I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
Nope, you just state your name and address for the record and tell us a little bit about your project.
I live in 26 Simons Farm Road in Bel Reco. The, the project is really taking a, an existing two-family and the two-family house that's two-story and building a third story on it to expand it from a two-bedroom to a four-bedroom each. The, the variance being, you know, this is within the parameters of the SMF, so it is, you know, the structure itself is fine. The challenge is that the setbacks, which I really can't do much about, are basically, you know, limiting the, you know, the, you know, they, they do require a variance just because that's the way they are, that's the way the building was built back in 1960. So really, the relief here we're asking for is to, to, you know, keep the grandfather of the setbacks and everything else basically is, you know, within the parameters of the zoning.
Okay, and it, it is a two-family, is it? It hasn't been subgraded out to be a duplex or a condo?
I apologize, I can barely hear you.
It is, it is a two-family, but it's, it's a single-standing two-family, it's not a condex or condominium?
Absolutely, absolutely. Also, if you, if you, if you want to know, too, I am, this is going to be my third project in Lowell.
Yeah.
And, you know, all my projects, I basically try to bring in, you know, something extra and something that's better for the tenants that they come in. You know, the quality of what we build is actually pretty impressive.
Well, it's, it's a nice, it's a nice, it's a nice property, it's well-maintained. I can certainly understand the need for more space and really, the only place to go is up.
Yep, I agree.
Up to the sky.
I think, I think there's definitely a shortage of four-bedroom in Lowell and, and especially nice ones. We own a property up the street on 75 Beacon Street and we've done a major renovation there and it's actually a very successful project.
Great, great. I appreciate that. That being said, I'd like to open up public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Sure, ma'am, come up to the podium and just state your name and address for the record and try to help you.
Joan Harrison and I live at 685 Beacon Street, which is a house over from the one he's taken care of. My concern is just the property as it stands in the driveway that was on the outer side, the left side of the building. I understand you have a very small driveway there, but it's also where the bus, the transit buses stop, it's where the school buses come around, there's a lot of traffic that comes around that corner on two wheels and there's a lot of kids in the neighborhood. And I just want to know, how is that variance going to affect how many cars are on the street parking, which the visibility to get out of Beacon Street now is horrible.
Okay. Yeah, we're looking at it on Google Maps once again, we're utilizing. So you're saying where the, the electrical box is, is that the bus stop itself? Okay. Is that a city bus? Is that a city bus or a school bus?
City bus.
City bus.
There's no sign.
There's no sign?
Yeah, there's no sign there.
That's, uh...
Maybe it fell down.
But they usually stay on Willard Street and like kitty corner to let the kids out.
Can you, can you come to the mic? Sorry, just, we gotta...
When the school buses come, they usually stop at the end of Beacon in like kitty corner Willard, so to stop the traffic in every direction, because you also got people coming from the back of Market Basket and the loading docks and all that there. There's a lot of apartments that have been put across the streets, there's all those condos that they build across the street from my house, so there's a lot of people that started out as everybody was supposed to be off-street parking, but people, they have kids that grow and they have more cars, I understand.
It just seems like a weird spot for a bus stop where they got the transformer, the electrical box transformer there.
They do.
Especially, especially for schools, too, with children, so, but...
I believe you said it was a city bus, LRTA?
There's no sidewalk there, so kids from all those apartments cross and walk on that, my side of the street, the side that his, his building is on.
Okay, thank you. Just to clarify, it's city bus?
Yeah.
The LRTA?
Yeah.
Okay, because it's, it's not posted, so...
Well, unless they moved it, it was, yeah.
They'd have to make...
It was on top of the pole.
Okay.[1753.21]
The pole, if you looked at on Google Map.
Mm-hmm.
I'm her son. I live where...
Are you speaking to the mic?
It's on the driveway.
You're just speaking to the mic, sir. Just state your name and address since we're involved in that.
I'm Joan Harrison. I live at the same address as she does.
Okay.
And if you look at Google Map, whoever, the original owner had a no parking speed, parking driveway on the other side. It's a duplex.
Yeah.
And I don't know how people are going to be able to get in and out. Because it went, during the winter, you know, the city comes in and plows.
Right.
They just plow it, and they'll just be pushing it into his, that place. And right now, the sidewalks hasn't even been cleared.
There is no sidewalk.
There was one, it's probably a little bit.
There's a little sidewalk.
But there's no, it hasn't even been cleared.
I was trying to see.
I'm just worried about also, my neighbor that lives next door has an autistic kid, and how's that going to affect him when they have started working on it? What time they're going to start? What time they're going to end?
Construction is permitted by the city from 7:00 AM to dusk.
Turning it up, that's all.
Yeah, no, I understand. You know, we always really appreciate when neighbors come out. I do have the concerns about this bus stop, so I think at minimum, we need to clarify that. That it's not a posted LRTA bus stop. There's no posting, there's no sign, and there's an electrical...
Electric box, yeah.
Yeah, it's an electric box.
That electrical box even makes it very difficult getting out of the street.
Right.
You've got to like brief.
Okay, well, we can, we can address that internally through the board as far as, you know, that is a concern. Okay. Anything else?
No, that's good.
Thank you for coming out and expressing your concern. Appreciate that. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of the public area is now closed. I'd like to open up to the board, Van.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I do think this is a unique, a unique way of expanding your property, sir. Going up instead of across. So, just, just through you, Mr. Chairman, to Ms. Gonzalez here. So I'm just reading the memo that was sent out for February 7th in regards to this petition. Can you just elaborate on the, on number six, the comment? The commission may want to consider the fact that the building is directly adjacent to the traditional single-family zoning district. Adding a third store to the building may compete with other businesses, other houses in the neighborhood. Is that just the, the neighborhood would be kind of changed a little bit? Is that what you're referring to, Ms. Gonzalez?
Yeah, it's just a design thing. So all of the rest of the buildings in the area are all around like two stories, and that adding a third would kind of compete with what is around it.
Okay. So just, just a different landscape and vibe and character of the neighborhood? Okay. I mean, overall, I think it's a very creative way of kind of expanding your property and just kind of going up and not across, but... You know, I don't see any major issues from my part, but I'll listen to my colleagues and, you know, see what the input is, and from there, I'll make my decision. So those are just my comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Van. Judge?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I do understand, you know, the concern from the, from the opposing residents, simply because I know that there is a lot of high traffic there, especially during school time. There's an issue with speeding, and there's an issue... The LRTA bus does stop in, on that section, and there are residents across the street in those apartment complexes. So after school, it does become congested. So I understand that concern. The building is well-maintained. It's, I don't see an issue with the end product. I think what the residents are concerned about also is just the idea of the congestion, you know, with parking. If you build a multifamily, you are, you know, you're building for more residents, which the city of Lowell needs, so it's understandable. I just think that as long as you can satisfy the abutters, you know, their needs, I think it's a fairly good project. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a, this is a head-scratcher for me. There'll be eight bedrooms there.
I'm sorry?
There'll be eight bedrooms in this building.
Yep.
That's a potential for a lot of cars. So I see parking as an immediate concern.
So the side on the left actually has a little bit more space that we could expand to actually add more cars into it.
All right, but nothing here indicates that.
I'm sorry?
Nothing here indicates that. There's nothing on the plans that indicate that.
No, they did not put that in.
Right. So eight bedrooms means additional parking. This does not speak to where those cars would be parked.
Yeah, I, I, this is, I know from the, from the requirement that we, what we put forth was basically to meet that requirement, but there's an eye to basically see if we can expand it. And that's, you know, that will go maybe through the, you know, the building works, whatever, the driveway expansion.
Yeah.
We definitely don't want people to be on top of each other.
Well, you're going to be.
I'm sorry?
You're going to be. There's no way of escaping that. You got eight bedrooms.
Yeah.
I mean, your idea is to grow this property, if you will, to accommodate future residents who require more living space because their families, their family composition is larger.
Right.
So you go from a duplex with four bedrooms now to a duplex with eight bedrooms combined.
Yeah. So...
The potential is there for...
Absolutely.
Okay.
So...
So I'm concerned with that.
Sure.
In addition to, are you familiar with the comments from the Department of Planning and Development? Do you have a copy before you?
I don't have it in front of me, but I read that. Yes.
Can, do you have a copy of the comments that he can refer to? I have a paper copy here, and I'm concerned with number four, where our staff has indicated that maybe, that maybe you'll go about this in a different way because what you propose to do absolutely derogates from the character of the existing homes. So I'm interested in hearing how you would respond to the DPD suggestion, number four.
Yeah, so for, from terms of the character, if you look across the street, the buildings that are there are all very big and structurally large. So it wasn't that unfathomable to see this structure basically being built in that area.
Well, it's a completely different style home. What you propose to do is not what currently exists there.
No, of course not. That's the...
Which, which doesn't give it a thumbs down on the street, you know.
I sure hope it is.
We've got to think outside the box and have some vision, I understand.
Yeah, yeah.
But it definitely derogates from the character of the neighborhood. So the DPD staff that is here this evening, can you add anything as to why the department thought it was so important to emphasize this?
So when it comes to something like that, the way I understand it is a special permit process. Those of, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, any of the lawyers on the board, the special permit process, the requirements, the special permit process, the requirements are a little bit more strict than getting a variance granted. And, you know, we did anticipate that there would be some pushback from neighbors in the area. So that comment was included if the board felt they wanted to see more from the applicant and, you know, uphold the project to a more strict standard.
Well, I'm very confident in the work that your department turns out, and I rely on it heavily. And I, for one, would like to take the advice of the department, and I do think that this needs a more strict look than the simple variance. So having said that, I'm going to withhold judgment until I hear from, from the remainder of my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Member Brier that this is, this is a bit of a head-scratcher. I mean, is, I mean, don't want to take away from what is obviously a need in, you know, more existing housing that is, is needed. And you can only go up, like Chairman mentioned.
That's a problem, right.
But, and so with the shape of the lot and the topography, I think you probably do meet the, for a variance, I think you do meet the hardship on this. It's just, I mean, I don't know, Peter or Serena, maybe, I mean, we're only, it looks like all we put on, at least all that's been noticed, and I understand we did the catch-all as well, was relief for a minimum side yard setback requirement. But the applicant himself, in his narrative, pointed out numerous other variances that would be required. So, I don't know, I'm trying, I guess I'm trying to understand, what is it we're dealing with there? Are we just dealing with the side yard? Is it everything, and you're just throwing in the catch-all? Or are we dealing with the special permit? What's the, what is it that's being asked of us?
And there isn't a special...
Well, I was directing it to the, to staff.
So just at first glance here, and I'm also basing it off the applicant's narrative, but looking at the project, it's side yard, max FAR, the four-to-area ratio, because it's going up, and they're already, I think they're right at the limit right now. And as has already been alluded to, they're definitely going to need a variance for parking. They would need 16 parking spots, and I just don't know how that could fit on that lot.
Yeah.
But those three are what they would need variances for.
Well, that was going to be the other thing, too, is obviously the dimensionals on the parking don't seem to fit in, at least on the right-hand side or left-hand side for facing it. Because the dimensional, you're looking at two spots. Dimensionals are supposed to be nine, nine by 18 with two cars. It's actually going to be nine by 36. And the dimensional on the right-hand side or on the Willard Street side, I mean, well, sir, I know you provided us with the plot saying that that is 32. I, I don't know if that's, I don't know whether that's correct or not. I mean, it's, it's written in as 32 feet, but...
33.
On the, up to the porch, it's 24.7. So, and plus, we got to factor in, there's got to be a buffer zone between the, I believe it's a three-foot buffer zone, if I'm not mistaken, between the building and the, and the vehicles. So that side, well outside of the dimensional requirements, obviously. I know when you said on the opposite side, on the, I guess, right, left-hand side, if we're facing the building, it's the same exact thing. You say there's 33 feet, but it's, it shows up on the, you wrote in 33 feet, but it shows up towards the porch of 24.7. With a little bit more space, you got a little bit more width there at 12 feet. So parking's, parking's, the parking dimensions are serious, you know, are going to be an issue, especially in light of the, the area. You're got a, you know, you're coming off of Willard Street and Beacon Street and, what was the other street there? Escapes me now, but it's a three-way. There's a three-way intersection there. And, and taking into account also the fact of the, you know, from the, what the neighbor says, is a regular bus stop from the LRTA there, which, there's no, from what I can see, the Google is no sign. I'll, I credit, I'll take, I'll take a word for it, that that's regularly there. This possibility of the sign got knocked down and never replaced. I know in my apartment across the way, there's a bus stop across the way, across the street from me, that the sign got knocked down about a year or so ago, and they never replaced it. I don't know what, why the LRTA doesn't do about that, but, plus the school stop, and plus, I'm going to guess, there's an electrical box there, too, that's probably, no, mass, mass electric or national grid or whatever, is probably there doing work with that, so... I don't know. It's, again, it's just a... This, this, the parking really, really concerns me. But again, on the other hand, I don't even, you don't have much to work with either, so...
There is a possibility of stretching the parking into the backyard.
Okay. They could take out, take out the side porches, or?
Yeah, we could, we could move one of the side porches, the one on the left, and put parking in the back.
Okay. But I think that's probably going to require you, at least from a building perspective, because you're going to need a second egress from probably moving that back in the back.
Well, no, yeah, we'll, we'll have another egress somewhere.
In the back, I presume, right?
In the back, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So, so I don't know off the top of my head the dimensions on that, but it looks like it's pretty tight on the green space requirement, so I don't know. Right, so I don't know if the, extending the pavement back there, I can't do the calculations that quick, but it might cause a problem.
So, so it's a catch, it's a catch-22?
Yeah.
Pretty much. Yeah. And certainly, I would hate to give up green space, but also considering the area where that, you know, where the property is located, especially in the three-way intersection with public, public transport there. You know, I would, I would probably be agreeable if you were, agree, if you can look into extend, taking out that, taking out that side porch, putting it in the back, and then extending the driveway.
Sure.
Just so it can at least fit cars. And then, then, then there's going to be the, there's going to be the thing, too, where you're going to have to designate, you know, probably you have to have designated parking spot for one, for the opposite side unit on that side.
Sure.
Just to, just to make things all clear, because it's, you're only, you're only allowed two spots there anyways.
Yes.
You got the, I guess you can park out on the front, but I don't even, with the main, you know, that's going to be impossible with the main thoroughfare Beacon Street there, so...
Yeah. If I may?
Yep.
So I completely agree with you. I think, you know, I didn't submit it. I wasn't sure, you know, I didn't want to commit to it in terms of doing that kind of a expansion, in terms of parking. Just for example, on 75 Beacon Street, up the street from it, we expanded the parking specifically for that purpose.
Okay.
And we did stretch the driveway in the back. We took, you know, some of the, you know, everything through the, through the, through the, through the apartment to make sure that the space was being used appropriately.
Yeah.
And we expanded it, and absolutely, this is what we want here. We don't want people on top of each other.
Well, also, you don't want people, you want to try to avoid, you know, across the street. You got the condos across the street, even though it's designated parking.
Yep.
Who knows if people are going to just go park there anyways, and then you might be running into issues with, with, well...
Yeah.
Ultimately, you're, well, I presume, you're the landlord, you're going to be the landlord, I presume, right? So it'll be coming upon you, people will be complaining to you about like, because you're, technically, they'll be your neighbors, and... So I think if we can, if we can maybe consider continuing this, updating the site plan to possibly extend the driveway on the...
That's right.
Let's call it the left-hand, the left-hand side, if we're facing the, the building, to encompass, you know, to make it... Well, now you're going to try to make it compliant for three cars. I know we're taking away from green space on that, and I hate to do it, but, I mean, again, we're in this situation. It's, it's a very unusual situation here that we got to weigh, we got to weigh the good with the bad on, on either of those, so... But I would, that would be my suggestion on this, is to go back to the drawing board a little bit with what you, with that suggestion, so...
Okay.
That's what I, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. I share, I share the immediate concerns as it relates to parking. You are going two to four to eight as it splits in bedrooms. If we look at both physically and on, on the screen, the existing driveways right now, at best, can total three on each side. And if there's medium-sized cars, compact-sized cars. So if we reconfigure those driveways, now we're, now we're encroaching on green space. So you're now, you know, now we're looking at additional variances. We definitely need some type of parking plan, and for, and we may even have to have a parking variance here if we're going to go to eight, because...
Okay.
If we're two, if we're two for, you know, two times eight, 16, that's a lot of cars. And that property will not hold that. It just, it simply won't. The non-conforming of the property, it, it may meet that criteria for parking. Going up, so we're going up, we're taking away green space, we're going into a parking variance, which in my mind becomes public safety concerns, especially... which in my mind becomes public safety concerns, especially the way that, that little intersection or tri-section, if you will, is set up. I think you have, I think you, I understand what you're trying to do. You're trying to increase your rental and increase your space for families because they, you know, families are growing. But I don't think that what we're being asked to relieve here, the relief here is just not the side yard setback. I think we have to look at this from a parking standpoint, from a variance for green space standpoint. And then what is your FAR going to be final? And then naturally, I think we need to look at, can you, from the Willard Street side, on that entire left-hand side of the property, does your deed have it, is that all, is the interest of that property, property, just the driveway, is there? There's nothing in the back. There's no paper street or there's no rear driveway, right?
Not that I know of.
Okay, all right. Because that would be my concern, because now you're starting to encroach onto your neighbor in the back left-hand. You know, if we start. Do you know the exact length of that driveway, the driveways now roughly, 35, 42 feet? What do we have, 37?
33.
33.
32 and 33. At least that's what, well, that's what he wrote, but we say 24.7 up to that.
So, if we went, if you go back, you, you, you need to give us a better understanding of how far back you think you can go. And then what the relief is going to be for that parking variance.
Okay.
Because if you only go back 10 feet, now we're only talking four and a half cars or a total of nine cars. And you also have to be aware of livable green backyard space for your tenants.
Yep.
I know it's a lot, but I mean, my first concern was, you know, derogating from the neighborhood to go up another floor. I mean, these are standard side-by-side two-family homes on that street. They've been there forever and a day. I understand what you did at 75, and I remember that. But those are, those are some, those are some major concerns. Because you don't have, we don't have a side, we don't have a sidewalk. You have a made sidewalk in front of your, your own home, but then the rest of it's shrubbery. You go driveway to shrubberies in front of the other homes, so where does that parking overflow to? It's going to be either in front of other people's homes or it's going to be across the street, so.
Yeah, and that's why I want to make sure I'm on the property.
Yeah, I think in order to have due diligence, I think it's going to be worth all our efforts to give you a continuance, take a look at the property, take a look at what you can do for parking, and then come up with what your total parking needs, what you have, and then what your needs will be.
Okay.
Because it does change the property itself once you start adding additional bedrooms on. Because if you have a, you have a four-bedroom and everybody in the house has, everybody has a car.
I'm with you. I get, I get that.
Yep. No, I just want to, you know, we want to make sure we're all, we're all doing, doing our due diligence. So, if you're open to a continuance, our next meeting is the 14th of March. Does that give you enough time to kind of value these things out?
Yep, I will be able to.
DPD will walk you through what your requirements will be for green space, what your requirements will be for parking. And then we can, we can add those to your application and then move forward.
Okay.
And in the meantime, if we could get some type of clarification to LRTA, what's going on over there as far as that being a bus stop? One, we need to make sure, is it a posted bus stop? And if it's not a posted bus stop, then we need to have communications sent to LRTA, too. We must have the master plan for spots, for bus stops in the city. Generally, they are signed, and while they're looking at it, they might want to take a look at all their other sites for signs that have gone down. Because to me, I think that's a huge public safety hazard to have any bus stop on that corner. So, this has nothing to do with you and your petition. This has nothing to do with any, the only thing this has to do is with what we were, what was brought to our attention by the kind neighbors here and then what we're seeing. Because I'd be concerned if I had anyone coming on and off buses on that corner.
The Centerville bus stop that's up there?
Yeah.
Yeah, Centerville. Central.
So, is March 14th will be fine?
March 14th is fine.
Any other comments or concerns by the board?
Mr. Chairman, I won't be here. Just letting you know, I won't be here, just, but, you know, if, that's it. Just a heads up that I won't be here. That's it.
Okay.
Okay, so, so the number of spaces, four on each side is good, or is there a difference? We should work with the...
It's going to, you work with DPD. It's going to dictate on the number of bedrooms per, close to the ratio chart within the zoning.
Okay.
You're looking at a considerable amount of parking spots.
Okay.
But, you know, you, it's appreciative you willing to look at this, you know, and understand what needs to be done.
You know what, when I meant at the beginning that we'd like to build really good quality places, you know, quality of life and parking is very important.
Right.
Make sure, you know, you know what you're doing, people know, can predict and have control over their life in that respect. So, and safety, obviously, safety is a big deal.
Yeah. So, that driveway to the right-hand side of the house, it's not, it's not shared. It just, at some point, they must just got together and just said, we'll just pave it, right? We'll just marry it together?
They're married together, yep.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
That's a draken. Doesn't look like it even goes there.
Living in the city, that's kind of what you got.
Yeah, yeah, well, we're keeping, this board is keeping an eye on paving as well. So, obviously, it's pre-existing, so. No other comments or concerns? We're looking at a continuance to March 14th. May I have a motion?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2022-6 for 697-699 Beacon Street to continue the public hearing to March 14th, 2022.
May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Briere. May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Approved continuance to March 14th, 2022.
Vice Chair Peck?
Approved continuance.
Member Callahan? Approved continuance to March 14th, 2022. Member Briere?
Approval.
Member Prokop?
Approved continuance, March 14th, 2022.
All right, so thank you. Thank you for coming in and having an open mind here. And please reach out to DPD and we'll see you back.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the citizens for coming out and providing us with that information and your concerns. Thank you, man. Sir. Moving forward to under the other business, we have minutes for approval from February 14th, 2022. Anyone have any concerns, edits, additions, or remarks? The notes are getting better and better.
Yep.
Thank you very much for your, for the time and effort placed on these notes for public record. None being heard. May I have a motion to accept?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for February 14th, 2022.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Vice Chair. May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Approved and accept minutes 214, 2022.
Vice Chair Peck?
Approved the minutes.
Member Callahan? Approved minutes for February 14th, 2022. Member Briere?
Approval.
Member Prokop?
Approved and accept minutes for February 14th, 2022.
We have no other business. Any other comments or concerns from any of the board? Anything from DPD? None being noted. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're going to adjourn. Thank you for your time.